Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 16th Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to, at this time, call on Mr. George Laurie for an invocation. Welcome this evening, George.
First of all, thank the Dare County Commissioners for allowing us to open each and every prayer. Question I had is, how do you pray about the coronavirus? I can ask God to guide our residents and our federal governments to do their best in this crisis. I can also ask God to be with our governor and state officials as they translate federal and state resources into a workable response, but I prefer to concentrate my thoughts into guiding our commissioners and our Dare County agencies into working together to be as prepared as possible for the inevitable intrusion of this disease into our beach community. As I have noted before, citizens of Dare County always look out for one another in weather-related crises, and I expect it will be no different this time around. God willing, this tourist season will be as busy and productive as it always is, and with God's help, the virus will stabilize and allow all of us to act upon it over the next two months. Let our firm belief in God guide us to make the difficult decisions that lie ahead. In this stressful time, let's remember that consensus and listening to others is a good thing. Respect for your fellow human beings at all times. This is what leaders do, and I applaud all of you, past and present. We're trying to do right by the OBX. So let us pray. Blessed are you, Lord our God, sovereign of all, who has kept us alive, sustained us, and brought us to this season. We thank you and sing your praises for our lives which are in your hand and for our souls which are in your keeping. You are goodness; you are compassion; you have always been our hope. Soften our hearts and open our minds. Grace us with your light when our path grows dark, with your strength when we grow weary, and with your support when we falter in all resolve. King of the universe, you have commanded us to do your work for the betterment of the Outer Banks. Be with these commissioners and others who serve Dare County on a daily basis. Guide them in what appears to be the upcoming challenge of a lifetime. May this be God's will. Let us say amen.
Amen.
Thank you for blessed day, blessed 2020.
Thank you. May we stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
County manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I had one on the agenda as the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager. I had a number of items that I wanted to address this evening, but I'm going to limit it to the coronavirus. I'd like to just educate the public a little bit more in that the Dare County Board of Commissioners, when we have hurricane situations or something unprecedented such as this, the control group is activated. And I am chairman of that control group, and over the weekend, having dealt with a number of issues Saturday and Sunday, I called for a special control group meeting to be held this morning at 8:00. And for the benefit of the public, the control group consists of our six mayors, county commissioner Couch for Hatteras Allen, myself, park superintendent Hallick, county manager, our sheriff, and our director of health and human services, Dr. Davies. So we held that meeting this morning. That body, that control group, decides a number of issues that are taken, either having to deal with the hurricane or even having to deal with this unprecedented dilemma that we're in right now with respects to coronavirus. So they make those decisions. We met this morning at 8:00 at the emergency management building, and the group met for two and a half hours, and we discussed numerous issues before us. I'll show you some, share some numbers with you that Dr. Davies shared with us this morning. Keep in mind, that was 8:00 this morning, so this evening, I'm sure those numbers have certainly changed. But worldwide, there are 169,000 cases. There are 6,513 deaths worldwide. The virus is in 49 states. Of those 49 states, there's 3,602 cases, 66 deaths in the United States. There are 32 cases reported in the state of North Carolina, and there are no deaths reported at this time. Some 13 counties are affected. God bless that, right now, there are no reported cases in Dare County. The CDC issued no more than 50 should gather in a group. That was this, as of this morning. And then 10 or more that was in the high-risk age group of 65-plus, no more than 10 in a gathering. And then, of course, avoid non-essential travel. Just this afternoon, the vice chairman and I were back over at EOC, and we were listening to the president, and they've already reduced that 50 number in a gathering to 10. Dr. Davies should be here in a little bit, and I'll ask her to bring us up to date on some additional latest information she may have, but she was, I know the White House mentioned that, but she wanted to hear that from CDC to confirm that. We have established our public information officer Dorothy Hester. As what we do with hurricanes, we establish a phone bank. Little bit unusual, this go-round, we got that up and going. The public information officer, Ms. Hester, educated a good number of ladies this morning as to the procedures with the way that phone bank is handled, as well as Dr. Davies addressed them with respects to the virus. We are putting ladies in charge of that phone bank that are, I believe nurses, isn't that correct, Mrs. Hester? That can answer the true technical questions with respects to the virus. And we got that up and running this afternoon at 2:00 this afternoon. Our emergency management director, Drew Pearson, I know that there's some concern about our stores not having enough product in those stores. He has checked with the principals at Food Lion, Harris Teeter, Publix, and Walmart, and all continue to get their weekly product delivered. And there's no, nothing stopping that product from being delivered on its normal schedule. I happened to be personally in Food Lion yesterday in KDH, and the shelves were stocked multiple products in the entire store, with the exception of paper products. And as the president has said this afternoon, you know, be respectful of your neighbor, and don't take a whole grocery shopping cart and fill it up with your paper products, and be a little respectful of your neighbor. So, you know, don't panic from that perspective. But we'll continue to watch that. The trucking industry is moving product throughout the country, and we've been assured that product will get here on the Outer Banks. At least, that is as of the latest. This certainly is an ongoing issue. It will get worse before it gets better, so we will have to monitor this daily. The control group will meet daily and address new issues as they're brought to our attention. As I said, be respective of your neighbor when purchasing. And there are 11 counties in North Carolina, each that have issued an emergency declaration, and we're one of those, and that's what came out of the control group this morning to issue an emergency declaration. And we have posted that on our website, and we have got that out to the media. In addition to that, we've issued a bulletin with some bullet points of things that you should be monitoring and doing on your own to protect yourself and your family. Our schools, I invited Superintendent Farley to our meeting. He's not a member of the control group, but I felt it was important that we have his input from the schools as to what the schools are doing, and they are doing a phenomenal job. They are shut down, as you well know. Teachers are having to instruct remotely. There are 15 locations that are being set up to serve meals, breakfast, and lunch. If a child does not have a computer, they have those at the schools, and the parents and Superintendent Farley has sent out a letter to the parents stating that they can come by, they'll have a couple of days this week to come by and pick up those computers. If they do not have internet service, the school has worked out a deal with Verizon so that they can get that internet service, and God bless our community foundation. Once again, they've stepped up to the plate, and they will pay that tab. So this is very, very encouraging to see this. Superintendent did say that they're anticipating anywhere from eight to 10 weeks of being shut down. That is a moving target, depending on how drastic this country's hit with this virus, and that's hard to predict at this time. Superintendent Hallick was there to report on the parks. Unfortunately, the interior department has not issued any specific guidelines as we speak. He was looking to try to limit access to the Wright Memorial because that is their, one of their biggest drawers and biggest crowds, and he had sent a request to the interior department to address that. And he was called for a conference, all the superintendents throughout the country are on a conference call at 4:00 this afternoon. So I anticipate potentially some potential closings there, but I haven't had a chance to talk to Superintendent Hallick. I'm sure he's probably wrapping that conference call up with the interior department as we speak. Dare County, we have some issues and things that we're implementing, and before I go to the county manager for him to go over that, Dr. Davies has arrived, and I'd like to give Dr. Davies an opportunity to speak to us. Thank you, Sheila.
She really just arrived.
Thank you, Sheila.
Certainly, you're welcome. Good evening. So I'll just touch on a few things that we've been doing lately, some of the updates, not only for you all, but then certainly for our public. First, I'll just start off with the case report. The latest figures, reported cases worldwide, we're at 181,127 of COVID-19 in the United States, 3,927. That's coming from 49 states. West Virginia is the only state currently without a reported case.
Excuse me for interrupting, Sheila. As those of you in the audience and those of you listening, listen to those numbers because I just gave you those numbers at 8:00 this morning, and look how much they've changed just since 8:00 this morning. Thank you, Sheila.
Fortunately, the number in North Carolina is still, I'm not sure if you said 32 or 33, but we're at 33 now in North Carolina, and that's from 13 counties. And currently, we still have zero reported cases in Dare County. The team's been hard at work in pulling things together, activating our emergency preparedness plans and response. You may have heard earlier, and I'm sorry, chairman, since I wasn't here, I'm not sure what you've covered, so I apologize if any of this is repetitive.
No, you're fine.
We did activate the Joint Information Command Center this morning, and at 2:00 this afternoon, we opened our call center. Our call center is available Monday through Friday now, from 8:30 a.m. till 5:00 p.m., and we will adjust those hours if we need to, and certainly can operate on weekends if we need to. The call center is being staffed by, at all times, a nurse and then someone also from our social services division. The website is being obtained and maintained, and we encourage folks to go to that for the latest information, and that is darenc.com/covid19. Today, we started as the first, with the first bulletin that was released from the Joint Information, the JIC, and that contains a lot of information that's really, really valuable to our citizenry, and that we anticipate will be at least a daily update as well. Those bulletins will be numbered so they're easy to trace and track and keep up with the latest information. The overall message is that I want to kind of reinstate tonight or reaffirm, first and foremost, is for folks to continue remaining calm and going to, excuse me, to the most reliable sources of information. And we continue to push those sources are the CDC, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and Dare County's website. We also want to continue to stress our good hygiene practices. I appreciate walking in and seeing the county our setup here tonight. Part of that good hygiene and protecting ourselves is maintaining social distancing, which is trying to stay as much as possible, six feet away from persons, and limiting group activities and group contact. The other message, too, is please, if you're sick, we ask for you to stay home. If you're worried that you have COVID-19 or want to be tested for COVID-19, we can't stress enough to call ahead to your provider. The guidance for COVID-19 testing, first and foremost, is still for symptomatic patients, and it's symptomatic patients who, their conditions would need medical care. And I state that, that if you are suffering from symptoms that you think are the flu, so fever and cough and difficult, well, and any discomfort with breathing, if those symptoms are manageable that you can do at home, we encourage folks to stay at home. But if those conditions escalate, then certainly we want you to call your medical provider or 911 if they're critical. The reason the medical community is encouraging folks with manageable medical conditions to stay at home is that we don't want to overrun the medical system. And you're really, if you've got manageable symptoms that can be managed at home, you're not going to get any different care. So it's really just you're trying to find out if you have COVID-19, and that's what the medical community throughout the nation is saying, we don't want flooding just for the sake of testing. So if you have concerns, the guidance is to call your medical provider, and they will screen and determine if you should go into their office for testing or care. Testing is being provided in Dare County at medical offices and urgent care and the hospital, but again, please call ahead. I am available, before I say I'm available for questions, I just want to do a quick thank you to our medical providers in our community. We are in daily contact with our medical providers, giving them updated guidance as necessary, but also just checking in with one another that everyone stands prepared and do they need anything. They're doing a great job standing and remaining prepared and handling the patients that are coming in. Our hospital is in great shape. We just was on a call with them before I came here. Volumes of patients are completely manageable, and they're doing great work out of the hospital and are just a great partner with our communication. And then also our EMS, our emergency management, public relations, all of these folks working together seamlessly to ensure our community remains prepared and able to address whatever comes before us. So I think all of those. And then thank the greater community. We're seeing lots of good things with people respecting the social distancing. We're seeing restaurants moving to work with carryout and pickup orders, trying to really encourage the social distancing. And so I applaud the efforts of our community for understanding the seriousness of this and doing what they can to help keep our public safe.
Great. Thank you so much, Sheila. Appreciate it very much. Anybody have any questions, Sheila? Commissioner Rollins?
Did they give you the latest on the unfortunate fatality rates to the 181,000 globally, the 3,027 in the U.S., 33 in North Carolina? I don't know if they are there. I'm not, I'm just curious, Sheila. I'm not pressing.
Sure. When I pulled those up, the latest, I didn't write down the fatality rates. I have them as of this morning, and it was
65,13.
6,513 globally as of this morning, and 66 in the United States, and zero in North And that was as of about 8:00 this morning.
Thank you again, Sheila. I appreciate it.
Certainly.
I will, I'm going to go over the declaration of the emergency and then our first bulletin, but before I do that, I'm going to call on the county manager. He's going to bring you up to date on county, Dare County, issues.
Sure. Sheila and her team have been working on this for weeks. This isn't something that just came up yesterday or Friday. They've been really on top of it, and haven't been many days that we haven't talked to try to figure out where we are, make sure we're doing the things we can do to get ready. Over the last several days, that effort has increased. I know that she and Dorothy and Drew spent most of the weekend at the EOC, fielding calls, doing the things they needed to do, talking with me, talking with the chairman, just trying to make sure we're on top of things and we're moving things in the right direction. With that said, we've worked hard to try to implement within the county itself all of the recommendations that we're getting from the CDC and from the Department of Health and Human Services. The control group did meet today. They issued a state of emergency. The guidance we're getting says limit meetings and gatherings greater than 50, and so that limitation is in the emergency management order. The exceptions that were in the governor's order are in that order as well for restaurants and some other things that were accepted out by the state. So they're accepted out of ours as well. With our regard to our staff and the things that we do within the county, all of our advisory board meetings, we've canceled those, asked the department heads to talk to their advisory boards and canceled those unless they have the ability or the need to do it, and they can do it online. If they can do it online and they need to meet, then we have IT in touch with our department heads to find, we have a program that we can do that on if it becomes necessary for some advisory board to do that. Our goal, as Dr. Davies had said, is to limit our face-to-face contact where possible, and so in that regard, we've encouraged online activities for government services. We've implemented what we're calling a call before your come process and encouraging people who have a need to interact with us at the county level to do things that we normally do, to call before they come to our buildings. If you normally drive by the water plant to pay your bill, call ahead of time because we're going to encourage you to do that online. If you normally apply for a building permit by dropping by one of our offices, call before you do that because we can do that online. Those things are examples of a number of things we can do online. So call before you come because we're going to try to limit as much face-to-face contact as we can. Some things we have to do face-to-face, and on those things, we're going to continue to do them, but we're going to limit those as much as we can because that's what the guidance is telling us we're going to do, we're going to keep this contained. We've closed all of our rec centers, the bomb center, the Dare Center, the Pheasant Center, the Parks and Rec Building. We have different problems with each one of those within the guidance. Some of them typically have more than 50 people. Some of them are predominantly for people that are at risk, and we'd be gathering those in buildings, and our guidance says if you're at risk, we shouldn't have more than 10, and so, you know, that limits what we can do. And so we've closed all of those things. Our outdoor parks, for someone that wants to walk outside, we haven't closed those, but we've locked all the bathrooms and those sorts of things because we can't ensure the safety in all the time, 24 hours of those bathrooms. You know, we've talked with, you know, the planning board, you know, they're a group that needs to meet, and Donna's working to try to make, see if we can do that online, too, to limit those. I've asked Pat in the water department not to disconnect anybody's water. You hate for someone who, for whatever reason, hasn't paid, but they've got this illness or something going on, and they need water to survive, and so for the time being, I've asked him not to connect, disconnect any water meters. We've limited all of our training and all those sorts of things that we would do, meetings within the county. Our folks aren't allowed to go out of the county for any kind of meetings, and they're not allowed to have a meeting with more than 50 people, nor are we to host any meetings that exceed 50 people inside the county. Again, we mentioned the high risk for people over 65 or who have compromised immune systems, those people that are identified. If we have those on our staff, then we need to limit them even further down to 10. We've instructed our staff to stay home if you're sick or if your family's sick, don't bring the illnesses into the workplace. We're working on ways, if we can do it, to allow folks to work from home. We've asked staff to look at whether we can do things with flex scheduling to bring in different segments of the staff at different times. I'm not sure how all of that's going to work. Some of it's not technologically possible. Some of it requires things we don't have to do. Some stuff requires connection to state computers, which require security that we don't have and things like that. But to the extent that we can follow those guidelines, we're going to put those things in place. On the transportation side, you know, we've limited our transportation vans now down to critical medical travel. So if someone has to go to the doctor, they can't avoid it, then we'll still take them. But if you've got a dental appointment or an eye doctor appointment, something that you can postpone, we're going to not take those. People have to call to make the appointment, so they're screening them. If they're sick or they're showing symptoms of any kind of illness, we're not going to allow them to travel on the vans. Where people can make other travel arrangements, it would be better for them because those vans are going to be used by multiple people. We try to keep them as clean as we can, but we can't ensure that they're 100% antiseptic 100% of the time. And so other travel would be better. But for those critical need people that have no other options, we're going to continue to try to provide those services to them. The last thing I'll say is, you know, we talked about the schools, and the last thing is that our website is up to date. There's not anything that we know that's not on that website, and so I encourage people in the community to go on the website, to look at the information. We have the latest that we have, that Sheila's gotten, that I've got, any of us have, will be up on that website. We have the links to the CDC. We have the links to the CDC. We have the links to the State Department of Health and Human Services. We have a frequently asked questions sheet, the things that people have been asking that we have answers to, we have on there. And so it's our hope that we can get out as much information as we can, give people a place that's reliable that they can go to and that is up to date on what is going on, and that is the place that we have to do that. We talked about the call bank. If you've gone on the website and gone through all those sources and your question still isn't answered, then we have the call banks that we talked about earlier. I'm sure Dorothy will talk about it again in just a minute when we get to her, but we'll give a number, and you can call that call bank. And we have the nurses that Bob talked about earlier on staff, ready to go to answer questions that may come up. So again, from our perspective, we're trying to do everything possible that we can do to meet those guidelines and to limit the contact of people. Social distancing is really the only way to contain this, and so we're trying to do our part and encourage others to do that. I don't know if Matt can pan around, but you can see what we've done in here with the chair arrangement to make sure we've done that. We had a small committee meeting earlier today. We've done that in some of the other rooms as well. And again, all of that's in an effort to comply with what we're being told or what we need to be doing to contain this locally as well as throughout the nation. Any questions about any of that?
Thank you, Bobby. Dorothy, you have anything you want to share?
I don't have a lot more to share. Just that website is a, we're posting everything. In the last 10 or 15 minutes, we've put a video update out from the Health Director where she's reviewing some of those frequently asked questions, such as why are we still allowing visitors into the county and why are we not saying how many people are, you know, we're testing? Some of those things that we're hearing over and over, especially on social media, we're doing our best to answer those questions. So I would encourage people to look at that. And as the county manager said, as we get questions into our phone bank, if we start to hear some of the same questions or see the same questions on social media, we're going to try to answer them and address them head-on so that, because we do want to share everything that we know. That phone number, I don't think we've said that, so I will give that phone number, 252-475-5008 is the number, 252-475-5008. And that is listed there on the Dare County website. But I'd just like to repeat how much I appreciate the team effort because it really does take all of us coming together to do what we need to do to address the concerns. And I do think there is a lot of fear and uncertainty here, everywhere, and good information is what we strive to do and will continue to strive to do.
Great. Thank you, Dorothy. Sheila, I know this afternoon at the President's press conference, the White House mentioned reducing it to 10. Were you able to validate that with CDC?
When I left over at EOC just after five this evening, the guidance has not been updated. So the President did state that in his address, that his definition of mass gathering was 10 or fewer, but the CDC guidance has not been updated to reflect that at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. For the benefit of the public, and I know this will take a few minutes, but I wanted to, for those of you that don't understand, well, just what the declaration of state of emergency is that the control group passed this morning. And I'll take a few minutes. I'm not going to read it word for word. I'll tell you what's in that state of emergency. You can find it online. But it basically says that COVID-19 is a serious communicable disease that's been found in North Carolina, posing an unprecedented public health threat to the entire state. The national emergency's been proclaimed by the President of the United States, and the governor of North Carolina declared a statewide state of emergency that closed schools, banned mass gatherings, and recommended social distance to be practiced statewide. It also says that the Dare County Control Group met and were apprised of the local public health impacts by the Dare County Public Health Director. Therefore pursuant to the authority vested in the Chairman of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, I declared pursuant to Article 19.20 of Chapter 166 of the North Carolina General Statutes and Chapter 92 of the Emergency Management of Dare County Code of Ordinances that a state of emergency as defined in Section 19.36 and 193.319 and Chapter 166A of the North Carolina General Statutes exist in Dare County. Section 1 of that state of emergency is declared within the jurisdiction of Dare County, and the declaration and the directives include within it includes all unincorporated areas of Dare County with the consent of the mayors of the towns of Duck, Southern Shores, Kitty Hawk, Kill Double Hills, Naxit, and Manio in the incorporated areas of those municipalities. Section 2 is the emergency area covered by the state of emergency shall be Dare County. Section 3, mass gatherings in Dare County are prohibited. Mass gatherings is defined as an event convening that brings together more than 50 persons in a single room or single space at the same time, such as auditoriums, stadiums, arenas, large conference rooms, meeting halls, theaters, or any other confined indoor or outdoor space. This includes parades, fairs, and festivals. A mass gathering does not, however, include normal operations at airports, bus and train stations, medical facilities, libraries, shopping malls, and centers, keeping in mind we've closed our libraries, or other spaces where more than 50 persons are gathered. It also does not include office environments, restaurants, factories, grocery stores, or other retail establishments. Section 4, hereby, I hereby ordered all Dare County law enforcement officers and employees of all other emergency management personnel subject to our control to cooperate in the enforcement and implementation of the provisions in this declaration. And finally, Section 5, I hereby order this declaration to be distributed to the news media and other organizations calculated to bring its content to the attention of the general public, to be filed with the clerk of Dare County Board of Commissioners as well, and be distributed to others as necessary to ensure the proper implementation of this declaration. This declaration shall take effect today, March 16, 2020. It took place at noon, and it shall remain in effect until it's modified or rescinded. So that may change moving forward. As I said, this is an ongoing situation with the county, so that declaration may in fact change as the control group meets. Our public information officer, at the end of the control group meetings, establishes and puts out to the public bulletins. That bulletin, that first bulletin, was issued at 12 noon this afternoon by the Joint Information Center, and that's our public information officer. And I'll try to be as brief on this as I can, but I think it's important that I note this on camera and as well as notifying our public of what these bulletins are. And to be lookout for these because they will continue after each control group meeting is held. This particular first bulletin state emergency's been put in place to allow the county and individual towns to quickly implement restrictions necessary to help combat the spread of COVID-19. The Dare County Control Group will continue to meet and will provide updates to the local community on a daily basis. Officials are closely following the guidance and recommendations of the professionals from the state as well as the federal government. The control group has established a joint information center to coordinate important communications from towns and agencies, update information, and a list of those most frequently asked questions received by local officials is now available at darenc.com/covid19, as the Dr. Davies has mentioned. You can sign up to receive these directly from the county at darenc.com/e-notify and from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Local hotline's been set up to establish answers and questions. As we mentioned earlier, Dr. Davies says that that phone bank will be available from 8:30 to 5:00 p.m., and it will be extended depending on certainly the call volume. Dare County's public health response to COVID-19 follows all state and federal guidelines. To minimize the health and impact of that, the county is implementing a variety of emergency strategies to increase social distancing and slow the spread. All county facilities will be closed until further notice, beginning at 2:00 p.m. today. It includes, as the county manager said, the Dare County Center, the Bomb Center, the Fetherson Center, and all Parks and Recreation facilities. Congregate and homebound delivery meals programs for older adults will continue with slight modifications at this time. Contact the Dare County Center or Bomb Center for more information. As we've stated before, the libraries will be closed. Dare County offices will remain open, however, in the interest of safety of our visitors and staff, face-to-face contact will be limited. Before visiting Dare County offices, please check the website or call to verify if services can be received online or over the phone. The Sheriff's Office requests the use of their online services for requesting purchase permits and renewing of concealed handgun permits. Fingerprint applications will be done by appointment only. The guidelines from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services recommend adults, as we've stated earlier, age 65 and older, avoid all non-essential travel. In the interest of public safety and the welfare of our community, everyone is encouraged to practice staying approximately six feet from other people whenever possible. Stay away from crowded places. Reduce the number of human contacts you have. Avoid people who are coughing or sneezing. Stay home if you feel ill or experiencing any symptoms. Wash your hands often. We will continue to closely monitor the dynamics involving this situation. Staff are in close contact with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And as I said, we will update you daily with these bulletins as things change. We, as I said in the very beginning, this is unprecedented in certainly my lifetime and I'm sure yours, and God willing, we will get through this. Please practice good hygiene, and please protect yourself and do what it takes to protect your family. That concludes Chairman's comments. Commissioner, County Manager.
Chairman, with that, we move to Item 2 on the agenda, and that's the Employee of the Month, and I would ask Pat Irwin and Bill Ashby to come forward to make that presentation.
Welcome this evening. Pat?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the board. I have some good news. Bethany Lusk, our Senior Customer Service Representative from Hatteras Island in a Frisco office, has been selected as Employee of the Month for the month of March.
How'd they get you down here, Bethy? What'd they tell you to get you down here?
It was a budget. I had to be here for a budget.
We always ask for help with the budget. Bethany has been with the Water Department's Frisco Billing Office for over a year. During her short time as a Senior Customer Service Representative, she's become very knowledgeable of the department's billing system, rules and regulations, and procedures. She's been quick to pick up any and all information with her attention to detail and has become an asset to the department and our Cape Hatteras Water customers. She does not hesitate to ask questions, takes initiative with any situation. She has great customer service focus and excellent communication skills. During her short time with the department, she has received numerous customer accolades for her job well done. Bethany's coworkers, supervisors, are very appreciative of her efficient and diligent work standards. Congratulations, Bethany. Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Wow.
She does an excellent job, and everybody on Hatteras Island, I mean, we've got so many calls that she's been down in that office, and we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you so much.
Bethany, thank you so much for what you do. We hope you're around for a long time.
I hope so, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And if you all would go right with Dorothy, follow her and we'll get a picture.
She's a mom. That's her husband. She's a mom. She just had a newborn.
Great.
She had a newborn a few months back. She had a newborn.
Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this evening, raise your hand. When you do, I'll recognize you. When I do come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. The green light will come on when your time begins. The yellow light will come on when you have about a minute left. And when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remark. I have one sign up, and that's George Lurie.
George, welcome again.
Welcome. My name's George Lurie. I've been living on the Outer Banks in Martins Point for, it'll be 17 years come May. Obviously, you recognize me perhaps as the lay leader of the Jewish community of the Outer Banks. Mentioned that once before. That was not planned when I came down here. In any case, I have two little things to comment on. One was, a couple of meetings ago, there was an exciting hubbub about a Second Amendment resolution. I have no comments on it. There were enough that were made. I will mention that once a year, Jewish community of the Outer Banks and the Unitarian community have a memorial service for Yom HaShoah, which is Holocaust Remembrance Day. We read names of folks who were exterminated in the Holocaust. It's a one-hour service. We also have a Dare County and Currituck County essay contest, and the winners get to read their essays. So far, I've gotten 20 from Steve Hans Journalism Class. The meeting is, or the service is set up for April 24th, Friday, at 7:00 at the UUCOB. I strongly suspect that it'll be canceled because that's five, six weeks out, but in case anybody is thinking of coming, you might want to put that on your calendar.
The date again, George?
Friday, April 24th, 7:00, UUCOB.
Okay.
And last year, I mean, even if, no, last year, because there were a lot of essays from Currituck, et cetera, we must have had 50 people in the building. So I just think regular rules are going to say it's out, but right now, I'll just mention it.
Right. Thank you.
The second one is, and perhaps Dorothy, as public information officers are aware, there was an exciting little conversation on Russ Lee's Facebook thing that sort of included Bob Oaks and Ben Kahoon. And some of you were, and the question was, if there's a hurricane coming in the off-season, you wouldn't tell people to come. So the question is, were coronavirus free? Thank God? And maybe so. And hey, obviously, people are allowed to come, but I was curious whether the Control Group or anyone else wanted to engage whoever represents the Outer Banks Board of Realtors for a comment. I know this is sort of a, you know, capitalism something. I still have two minutes to sort of babble about it. I mean, my particular opinion is, if you hadn't planned on coming to the Outer Banks, please don't come to the Outer Banks. If you have planned, hey, we're not going to send anybody away, but I wouldn't think I would want people to come, but I can't stop people. You can't put up barriers. I can't put up sensors that detect a car with an occupant who has a temperature of 100 degrees and do something terrible to their car as it tries to cross the Wright Memorial Bridge. But I'm just wondering whether you folks want to consider something amongst yourself or as part of the group for folks who don't plan on coming, should they come or should they not come? Okay? Crudely, I make a similar comment to the idea of, we don't want oil drilling out there, okay? Because if one, if we have one leak that can't be prevented, screws up the beaches. If we had one person who really shouldn't be coming down because maybe they happen to be a little sick and they come down here, is it better to say, stay away unless you're planning on it? I'm done.
Thank you, George, and I'll respond to that. As I mentioned, the Control Group met for two and a half hours this morning. We had lengthy discussions just about that. The state, as I've stated earlier, the Control Group and our Health and Human Services Department are following the state and federal lead on this. There has been no ban on travel, and so the Control Group felt like that as we got guidance from the state and the feds, that we would continue to follow their lead. So it was discussed in great detail that, is my time up?
I wasn't sure I should duck. It's a little taser. You have a 20-volt taser or something?
It was discussed in great detail that we would not put restrictions on travel. However, we made it clear that the message should be sent to use common sense and good judgment. So that's where we are. That may change in the next day or two, but we will be meeting daily. We will be continuing to follow the lead from the state and the federal government.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other public comment? Seeing none here, is there any public comment from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we close the public comment, and we move to item four, but I don't see Mr. Salmon here to make that presentation, so.
He's here in Buxton.
Oh, okay.
And this is the Dare County Veterans Resource and Job Fair, and Blake Salmon from down in Buxton's here to make that presentation.
Welcome, Mr. Salmon. How are you this evening?
Not too bad. You?
Very good, thank you.
So, good evening, Commissioners, county officials, Dare County community. My name is Blake Salmon. I'm here this evening as chairman of the Dare County Veterans Advisory Council. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to share information regarding the Dare County Veterans Resource and Job Fair, originally planned for April the 30th. And before I continue, we recognize the situation is dynamic. I have coordinated with NC Works this afternoon at 3:00 p.m. to postpone this event since it would have exceeded the 50-people limit, and we were going to use the Dare Center. So at this point, I'm prepared to finish talking to you, or I can give you the time back to use as you need for your agenda.
Blake, did you all set a time to postpone, or did you just, you just will continue to monitor before you set a new date?
So I'll be talking with Marcus Cottrell from NC Works tomorrow. We're probably going to target after the summer season, just because that's easier for folks. It could be done at any time, but I think at this point, we'd probably target September.
Okay, okay. Great, very good. I mean, you're certainly free to, I know what the Resources and Job Fair is all about because I've been working with some of your folks, but you're certainly welcome to, you know, let the rest of the board be aware of what you all had planned, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. The Dare County Veterans Advisory Council, in collaboration with NC Works, had planned to host a Veterans Resource and Job Fair to assist veterans, transitioning service members and their spouses, with identifying local employment opportunities and veteran benefits. We partnered with Marcus Cottrell, NC Works Career Center, Veterans Employment Rep, to assist him in maximizing his efforts to make Veterans Resource and Job Fair more beneficial for the Dare County veterans. As the Veterans Advisory Council, we focused our resources on assisting with the event location, originally had been the Dare Center, media outreach, and volunteer support, and providing box lunch styles dinners for the veterans in attendance. Mr. Cottrell has been diligently contacting companies that are interested in hiring veterans. To date, we had confirmed US Army Corps of Engineers, Spencer Yachts, Crossway Custom Composites, County of Dare Human Resources, North Carolina Highway Patrol, Lowe's, Twitty and Company, and Exhead Police Department. Mr. Cottrell will continue to work with the companies to find those that are willing to be represented, and we will list those on our website. In addition to those employers, we had planned to have NC Works Northeast Workforce Deployment Board career and mobile unit in attendance. Veterans Administration was going to bring a Veterans Center mobile unit that would be focused on counseling, psychological help, as well, and that was out of Greenville. Dare County Veteran Service Officer Patty O'Sullivan would have been there, and we would have had folks there working with the Advisory Council's veteran discount cards. The event would have been free to the veterans or spouses. Originally, again, it would have been in April at Dare Center. We'll find a date that affixes. So Chairman and Commissioners, we thank you for your continued support of the veteran community and for this opportunity to provide an update and disseminate information out to a broader audience. I would like to take, we could not take such an effort without dedication and resources of NC Works and their efforts to support the veteran community. We'd like to express our deep appreciation to Kelly Netten from Health and Human Services for her work and contribution to getting the event notification and media outreach going. We also are grateful at the generosity offered by Dominion Power and the Pirates Cove Tournament. They were going to pay for the meals that would have been served. And I'd be remiss if I did not thank members of our council for their time and effort, especially Mr. Steve Goodheart, who's taken the coordination lead for us. We have posted copies of the flyers throughout the communities, and we have them on our website, darenc.com/vets on social media, and that's most of what I had. Thank you. Standing by for comments or questions.
Thank you so much, Blake. Does the board have any questions, Blake? Well, thank you, Blake, and hopefully, we'll get through this, and we'll have a nice event in the fall. So, thank you so much.
Chairman, item five on the agenda. Dave Peterson's here to give us the annual report from Trillium Health Resources.
Good to see you, Mr. Peterson. How are you doing?
I'm doing good. Good evening, and I really do appreciate this opportunity tonight, and after what I've heard already today, this really does kind of seem secondary to what's going on around Dare County and the state and the country, so I do appreciate you allowing me this time this evening. Is the, okay. First, I want to thank Commissioner Overman and Commissioner Ross for serving on our Regional Advisory Board. They truly do ask really good questions and give excellent advice to Trillium Health Resources as we move through these changes in our system. So just as this update, our mission's transforming lives and building community well-being through partnership and proven solutions. This update, we will hit on who we are, some Medicaid transformation changes. I'll spend probably most of the time on that tonight. Some potential insurance company partnerships, a lot of organizational changes happening, and then, and some Dare County data-specific. So I made the mistake at one of the county meetings last year by assuming that everybody knew who Trillium was, so I will make sure I go into a little more detail about this this year. We cover 26 counties, over 1.4 million people in those 24 counties, and the 266 Medicaid, 266,000 Medicaid-eligible for people that need services for mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use services. We served last year approximately 57,000 people, and you'll see the breakdown of those three disability groups, about 71% with mental health, primary needs, about 20% with, yes, sir.
Just wanted to call out for everybody. When I saw this, Dave, I knew this number, but it just always startles me, but we service 266,000 Medicaid-eligible and 57,000 from mild to severe. That is 25% of the Medicaid-eligible population. Is that an accurate percentage for us in terms of our service, or is the 57,000 a much smaller percentage of the 1.4 million being served? I believe our primary service is to the Medicaid-eligible.
So, that's a good question. So when we talk about the people that we serve?
Yes.
We serve the very, very low risk. They may need medication once a month or go to a doctor, you know, every three months to the very, very high risk, okay? Those that need daily services and supports, and that's the 57,000 people, okay? The 266,000 are people who meet the Medicaid criteria but don't either access those services or don't actually need mental health services.
I didn't ask my question correctly.
Okay.
And you may not know this, but of the 57,000, how many of them are not in the 266 Medicaid-eligible population? How many of the 57,000 are outside that 266?
They're inside that 266,000.
That's my point, guys. 25% are taking advantage of these services. I just thought that was a staggering percentage.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Good point, good point, yes. And so in our system of our 26 counties, we have approximately 500 agencies that we contract with to provide those services in those three disability groups. Last year, we spent almost $476 million on services, and we serve those 26 counties, and as you know, Terrell County, the smallest in the state, is one of ours, to New Hanover County, which is the eighth largest in the state, and we cover over 12,000 square miles. This is the Trillium map. You'll see in the lighter green, we kind of break it up into three regions. That's the northern region with 10 counties. The interesting part about this map that I talk about every year is in those 10 counties, total population of about 200,000 people. And then in the central region, which I'm the central regional director of, we have Nash County, and then all the counties from Pitt County over to Dare, and that total population is almost 500,000 people. One county less than the north, but almost two and a half times the size. And then in the southern region, it's only seven counties, but they have over 750,000 people, primarily because of Wilmington and Jacksonville, okay? So that's our map of what we cover now. So I want to talk a little bit about the Medicaid transformation that's been going on for about two years, and this past year, the State Department of Health and Human Services put out an RFP for private insurance companies to start managing the low to moderate-risk individuals. And you see the list of the five insurance companies, AmeriHealth, Blue Cross, United, WellCare, and Carolina Complete Health, okay? They were awarded to start managing those folks with low to moderate risk. Now, getting to your point a little bit earlier, Commissioner Ross, that 57,000, well, now, these insurance companies will be managing some of those 57,000 now, all right? And I'll get to a number a little bit later. So they'll be managing the low to moderate-risk individuals. This, what you have in front of you now, is the state developed a map of how those private insurance companies will be managing. On that previous slide, the first four insurance companies are going to be covering the entire state, but the Carolina Complete Health is going to be managing regions two, four, and five, okay? And so they are not covering the entire state, all right? But this is not what our map as a local management entity is going to look at. And so what the state did was ask, the secretary asked the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners to send representatives into a meeting at the state, and Commissioner Overman was part of that meeting. We picked two people, the commissioner from Beaufort County and Commissioner Overman, to represent Trillium as our county commissioners. And at that meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Overman, but the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners recommended to the Division of Health and Human Services to keep the map the way it is now. In other words, those 26 counties that we currently serve, we will continue to serve those counties, okay? So this map is different because this is the private insurance company map versus what our map is going to be looking, that it currently looks like, okay? So when I say currently looking like, we are now called the tailored plan. We are the agencies that are going to have to apply to be approved to serve the people that we currently serve, the high-risk, high-cost individuals. Right now, there's seven of us in the state. The legislation says it could potentially be five to seven, all right? So if the state goes through the process, when we send in our request for information, they could keep it at the seven, therefore, we'd continue to manage those 26 counties. If they put it down to six, or they put it down to five, depending on who did not win the bid of the seven, then we potentially could be taking on some additional counties. Want to make sure that that gets heard because as this system rolls out, folks are going to have a lot of questions as we potentially could get larger. And like I said, we'll be managing the high-risk, high-cost individuals. Our application is due to the state. It was first said late winter, but now we're hearing it's going to be due in April to become a tailored plan. The big difference in this application is currently, right now, we manage the mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse services of those individuals. Well, we will then be taking on the whole person. In other words, we're going to be also managing that person's primary care, all right? Their doctors and their pharmacies that they get their medication from, okay? So this original plan was supposed to be in two phases, coming out in November 2019 was phase one, and then that was moved to a second phase starting in February 2020. But on November 20th, 2019, the Department of Health and Human Services suspended those go-live dates for the standard plans, the private insurance companies, to come in and manage the low-cost to medium-cost individuals. They did not put another date on this because they don't know when the budget is going to be passed. manage the low-cost to medium-cost individuals. They did not put another date on this, because they don't know when the budget is going to be passed, and that was the, the main issue for not going live with the private insurance companies, because we were work, we're currently working off of last year's budget, all right? So, they did want to keep us on track, and we do appreciate that, because we've been doing a lot of work to apply, to get ready for this application. And I will say, just for an example, the private insurance companies that applied to become a standard plan, we've seen some of the applications, and those applications are over 4,000 pages, okay? So we think that we're going to be asked a very similar request on what we're going to have to apply for, and so we're already working on a lot of those areas. The timeframes that are now, we're seeing in front of us, as you all know, the legislators don't get back into town until April 28th, and it's a short session that they're coming into. We don't know if they are going to approve potentially a mini-budget for us to go live or not, or there won't be any budget until they come back in January of 2021 in their long session. So that is up in the air right now. If they do approve a mini-budget for us at DHHS, then the private insurance companies can start the process of, again, of gearing back up to serve the low to moderate risk individuals. We're hearing that might take six to eight months, and then in the legislation, the tailored plan us, we don't go live until one year later, after the standard plans go live, all right? So that puts it back another year, if that's how the legislators decide to pass a budget or not in, in this short session, okay? So the impact today, right now, we will continue to serve all the individuals at the low, moderate, and high-risk services. So, we should not see a change in any of the services out there today. We are going to be still moving forward with developing our infrastructure to serve the whole person, and the, the big shift is, if you think about all the primary care doctors that do Medicaid, we have to contract with all of them, okay? Because it's a, it's not a closed network. And every single pharmacy in our 26 counties, we have to contract with every one of them, because they provide medication to those on Medicaid. So, our contracts process is going to be expanded by thousands of agencies. Remember I said we only have about 500 agencies right now? We're going to have a lot more after we have to go live with this. So with that being said, we do have a transition team that's just primarily focusing, because we still have day-to-day operations that we do, but we have a transition team that's focusing on how we need to make sure we're getting ready. We also hired Dr. Garcia, because of the utilization management growth of all the, all the primary side of the house versus the behavioral health, we're going to have to do a lot more authorization, so utilization management has Dr. Garcia in there now. Our care management staff that we currently have, who have the background and expertise in mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use, are now going to have to, we're going to have to gain some knowledge, skills, and experience on the whole person, on the physical side of the house, all right? So there's a shift in care management also. We have been working on the community development and member engagement on the whole person, by having health fairs, and by having healthy eating classes in the counties, and that sort of thing. We did hire a head of Department of Social Services and the Department of Juvenile Justice, because those are going to be a big resource for us to make sure that relationship continues to grow. All the county's DSS directors are very, very happy that we hired a head of DSS to handle a lot of the individual calls, except for Pitt County, because we stole one of their staff from Pitt County DSS, okay? But that being said, we were really pleased to have folks managing that. And then, like I said, our network is going to expand by leaps and bounds with all, all the, whole-person health, physicals, health contracts with primary care and pharmacies. So I talked a little bit about the funding changes. So, since the state has not approved a new budget, that's why the standard plan insurance companies can't come in yet, but they will be managing a part of our, a part of the Medicaid dollars. And what we're hearing, not in a dollar amount, but in a percentage amount, is of that 57,000 or the total Medicaid eligibility, the low to moderate risk individuals will be about 70 to 80% of the people we currently serve, okay? So we're looking at, from going down from 57,000 people we manage, down to about 18,000. That's the number we're taking a look at right now, all right? But keep in mind, we're now expanding of those 18,000, now dealing with all the primary care health of that individual, okay? So, our per-member per month that we get paid for Medicaid, and the way I give the example is, if we're taking an average of the low-risk all the way up to the high-risk individuals, and they're somewhere in between, and now we're only going to be managing the high-risk individuals, those folks, that per-member per month will go way up, okay? And I've already talked about the whole-person care, and what, this is an 1115 waiver that it's going to fall under. So, I won't go through all of these, but these are some of the projects that we're continuing to do with Oxford Houses, which Dare County already has a couple of Oxford Houses. We're adding, we added a couple in Nash County. We do have some food trucks to take, make sure we're addressing whole person, along with eating the rainbow, healthy eating classes. We've had Peloton bikes put in a lot of our counties, and then we continue to do the lock zone kits, which is decided by county manager on, on where those lock zone kits go in each of our, each of the counties. We have a mobile app that, we have folks accessing, if they want to chat about a, a mental health crisis. I will say, we just recently, and it's not on your slides, we just recently have opened up a Department of Social Services 14-day child respite facility. One is just opening up, and we're getting another one open up in about two weeks. And so, we have met with all the DSS directors in our, our 26 counties, and they were very pleased to see that, because we don't want these kids to be going into the hospital when they potentially could just use some respite. We still have, from the hurricane response teams, last year, we had them out here in Dare County and in Hyde County. We have crisis counseling with Hope for NC. We did do a Chalk for Mental Health Day in August. We still have a big project that folks need to make sure that the school system is aware about, giving some education, online education, on all the different things happening in the schools, like mental health issues, bullying, suicides, and that sort of thing. We have an outreach project that's helping foster kids in the community. We continue to do CIT classes with law enforcement and mental health first aid throughout our 26 counties. And then last is the specific Dare County data. Last year, we served 1,044 individuals. 757 of those were, had a primary diagnosis of mental health, 292 with a primary diagnosis of substance use, and 102 with a primary diagnosis of intellectual and developmental disabilities. And I always say that those numbers don't add up to the 1,044, because some of them are duly diagnosed, or they're in multiple services, both mental health and substance use, so. And that is this year's annual report, and open for any questions.
Thank you so much, Dave. Any questions today? Well, thank you so much, Dave. I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Chairman, item six on the agenda. As you all know, Donna and Dorothy have been working hard on our census work for, I don't know, several months at least now. They have a resolution to present to you, and I ask you to come forward with that.
Donna, welcome this evening, and as I sure echo the rest of the board's condolences to you and your passing of your father last week.
Thank, thank you.
We're so sorry to hear about that.
Yes.
As county manager said, Dorothy and I are the co-chairs of the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee, and we have been working hard on all of our census activities, and we had a full head of steam leading into this week, and we were going to have an entry in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and that got canceled, and then here we are. This seems kind of trivial, but we have been working hard. We have the Complete Count Committee, and it's been a good group of individuals, and we've been meeting monthly, and coming up with some ideas for outreach activities to get in, people involved in the census, and to make sure that they respond. And one of those activities was that we were going to have the board adopt a resolution declaring March 29th through April the 4th as Dare Counts Week, and if the board will let me, I'll go ahead and read that resolution.
Absolutely.
I don't know if Dorothy has anything she wants to add before I start reading the resolution, but...
I don't think so, other than hopefully even with everything we're going through, people will continue to receive their invitations and can respond online. This is the first year, the first time ever that they're accepting those responses electronically, so we, we encourage people to do that.
Right, and Dorothy would ordinarily be down here at the podium with me, but we're practicing our six-feet separation here, so. This is a resolution declaring March 29th to April the 4th, 2020 Dare Counts Week, whereas census data is used for congressional apportionment, transportation forecasting, and funding allocation for educational and healthcare needs. And whereas in September 2019, the Dare County Board of Commissioners appointed the Dare County Complete Count Committee to disseminate information about the 2020 census and encourage Dare County citizens to participate in the 2020 census. And whereas, the Complete Count Committee has been meeting since August 2019, and has identified outreach activities and locations for the dissemination of census information. And whereas, official census information will be mailed to Dare County citizens in mid-March with detailed instructions on how to respond to the 2020 census, either online, by phone, or by email. And whereas, April 1st, 2020 is census day nationwide, and every home in Dare County will have received a census response invitation for citizens to respond to the census. And whereas, it is important for Dare County to ensure that all our citizens are counted accurately, and in the right place for the 2020 census. Now therefore be it resolved that the week of March 29th to April the 4th, 2020 is designated as Dare Counts Week, and all citizens in Dare County are strongly encouraged to respond to the census once they receive their census invitation, this the 16th day of March 2020.
Pleasure of the board to approve.
Motion on the floor to approve by the vice chairman, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes that? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Donna, thank you for your help. What, what happens? Don't they do door-to-door? What, what's going to happen now?
The way that it works is, you're going to receive an invitation in the mail, a postcard, that tells you how to respond online, by phone, and you have a number on there, and you can go online or call. If you have a PO box, which a lot of people in Dare County do, there will actually be a census worker that delivers a paper questionnaire to your door, the official copy of it, and so you can respond to the questionnaire. If you haven't responded, after you get three or four different mailings, then someone's going to come knock on your door, census worker's going to come knock on your door, probably in June or so. Yeah, so they're going to work real hard to try to make sure that, that everybody responds to the census.
Got you. Good deal. Thank you so much, Donna, for all your hard work. Dorothy?
Chairman, item seven on the agenda is the ward of the 2019, 2020 equipment financing. In addition, while Dave is up there, we have the final GMP for the animal shelter that you all need to consider, so that we can hold steel prices and those kind of things. If we wait two weeks, there's some concern that the prices won't hold, so he'll present that to you as well when he concludes the financing.
Yeah, this is the, what we do annually with all the financing for the vehicles in the budget. It's a total amount of $2,25,943. Right now, we always do them over 36 months. We had seven responses, low responses, B of A, excuse me, Bank of America at 1.56%. Normally, we would put this on the consent agenda, but there's two things we're doing differently. There's one paragraph in the documents, and we stole this from City Charlotte and BB&amp;T governmental finance. We're not doing vehicle titles anymore with liens. We just say, you're going to get a UCC statement on, to secure the, the interest, and we had no pushback whatsoever. Matter of fact, a couple of them prefer to do it that way, and it's going to save a lot of staff time. The other one, there's, there's a paragraph in there about what we call EMA, which is municipal securities rulemaking boards, data repository that we're required to file information with by the SEC, which we now, the next public deal we have, we'll have to file all of these private placements with them. But we added a paragraph that allows us to do that before we're required to, so the board is asked to adopt the attached resolution and authorize the county manager and other staff to execute all the necessary documents.
Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the adoption of the resolution to award the three-year financing to BAPCC at a rate of 1.5663, and authorize the county manager and staff to execute all necessary documents. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes that? Motion carries unanimous.
Dorothy, you have, they don't have those. Okay, thank you. Dorothy's given you these handouts. They just got finished. I met with Whitey Turner at noon today. They drove down to, to meet and finished this up with us. We were planning to bring it to you the next meeting, mainly because they're getting pressure from their steel supplier. We wanted to move that up and ask if you would approve this today. They feel enough pressure that I'm going to call them after this meeting, and if you approve it, they're actually going to sign that subcontract tomorrow. What we've done is we've been through two rounds of bidding, they've done their scope verification with the responses. Whitey Turner has offered, and this includes a reduction of their fee, their construction fee from 7% to 6%, they've offered, and this includes a reduction of their contingency within the guaranteed maximum price, from 5% to 4%. We have some more items to look at that we'll continue to work on. They've got a value engineering list of things that we might be able to reduce the cost of. Their list is 169,000. I think we've got about 100,000 there, just giving it a quick glance this afternoon. I talked to Bobby, somebody might have to help me with the SPCA, Stager, the chairman of SPCA, and she, and she's comfortable with me saying that they're going to conduct a fundraising effort for the project. Their goal is going to be to meet the, the furniture fixtures and owner-supplied items, which are a lot of the cage, the stainless steel cages. On your sheet, that's, that's just over $200,000. I haven't reflected that in this, these papers yet, because we're going to have to wait and see. And then, we haven't done the estimate of sales tax. All the materials in here, we have to pay the sales tax through the contractor, but then we can file for a reimbursement. So they're going to work on that estimate, and I'll bring it back and update the project budget for all of those items that we're going to continue to work on. The second page is the summary I've been giving you for the debt issue that will finance the COA project, health and... Health and Human Services and Animal Shelter, and some EMS equipment and manu property next to Manayl Elementary School and the Buxton property that we closed on. The third page is the detail of Whiting Turner's guaranteed maximum price and the fourth and fifth pages are the budget ordinance or the amendment to the budget ordinance, which matches and reflects everything on the first page. I have talked with another architect, I've talked with another construction company who's doing, specifically one doing Health and Human Services, and they're doing another animal control facility within, actually, it's not shelter, but it's control, and they feel good about the number of participants that we had in the bidding was what they expected to see with their projects as well, just because it's a busy market, especially from Hurricane Florence-type related work, specifically with heating and air conditioning systems. So, what we're asking you to do is authorize the county manager, and I have the documents, to execute is the guaranteed maximum price amendment, which is really the change order number one to their original contract, and adopt this amendment to the capital project ordinance, which I said we'll bring back as we work on value engineering, get a better estimate of the fundraising and the sales tax. We'll bring back with more changes. And I also wanted to say, because we're combining this with College at Albemarle, one thing you don't want to do when you don't have some final numbers yet is to finance the project and bar too much. Well, COA right now is tracking for August, so we have that much time until we're ready to finance COA when we'll do this at the same time to work on the final numbers.
Great. Very good, David. Then, pleasure of the board.
So moved, I'm okay with this.
Okay, I was wondering.
I'm reading, sorry.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second. I've got a question I need to ask.
Absolutely, seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Go right ahead.
So, it looks to me like on here, the big tickets on this thing is the mechanical and plumbing, which is 1.47 million, and the other, which I don't understand, is the thermo and moisture protection, which is $420,000. What is that?
That's the building envelope, the wall system.
Okay, and is that something that's?
I mean, inside the masonry, that's the building envelope.
Now, is that more so for animal shelter than it would be for any other?
On that one, I don't think so. They were, you know, the first time around, we got, they combined the masonry bid with that bid, and first time around, we got one bid and we rejected it and rebid it and got three and actually reduced the number by about a third.
That is true on the mechanical. That is unique to the building.
The mechanical, yes. Patrick that built our EOC is working for, at projects at Centerra, and the state minimum for air turnover for animal shelter is 10 times a minute and operating room for the project he's working on is 12, and that's the minimum state requirement.
Right.
So, those rules, so to speak, are reflected in this $420,000.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay, that's what I, yeah, I remember. We discussed them.
Demolition.
I'm good.
The old building. Any other questions? Pleasure, the motion's on the floor then to approve as presented by Commissioner Couch and seconded by Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, let me bring it to the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman. On the consent agenda, you have the approval amendments, you have the amendment to the capital project ordinance for the Series 2018 LOBs and Nagshead Beach Nourishment, and you have an authorization to present a service weapon to the retiring deputy sheriff.
Move to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then you have one board appointment this month. This is the Older Adult Services Advisory Council. Ken Bacontas resigned on March 2019 and Amber Jennings resigned in March of 2020. Applications are all filed from Apollinia Bella Reber and Angelo Sinesso. The council recommends Bella Reber to fill the vacancy of Ken Bacontas as the adult services representative.
Motion to appoint Bella Reber.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That'd be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to item 10, Commissioner Business and Managers and Attorneys Business, and Commissioner Tobin is out of town, and so Commissioner Ross, would you mind kicking it off this evening?
I'd be happy to, sir. Thank you. I'll be very brief. We anticipated an Albemarle Commission meeting this month. We canceled the month of February due to some very bad weather that was occurring that night, and given the latest updates that I heard earlier from you with regard to meeting size, I suspect that will be canceled. Earlier today, the Audit Committee held its quarterly meeting and reviewed with Dave Clausen and Ernie DeBiro and Sally DeFosi the results of the audit. Nothing substantial was presented or discovered. Minor items, maintaining receipts, getting an appropriate signature, Ernie's on top of it following up, so it was a satisfactory review of our internal auditing procedures. Last week, on Thursday, Commissioner House, Chairman Woodard and I had the opportunity to spend most of the day in Hatteras High School, I guess, combined school, and had the chance to interact with the students on the reality of money. It was a very enlightening day for us and we chatted extensively on the ride back up about the students, their enthusiasm and the awareness of managing a budget. So, that was very good, very enjoyable. And we also had scheduled a soundside event task force meeting for this morning that was canceled. Mr. Nettles, Lee Nettles, is currently ill and unable to attend. I will just give the board a very brief update on that. Lee presented to the Town of Nagshead Commissioners about a week or so ago with regard to parking and the number of parking spaces that would be required, given an event center with obviously a convention hall, kind of presentation hall, a ballroom, and a hotel, and to the letter of the law would require approximately 850 parking spaces. Duh. Yeah, covers an enormous amount of area, to which we said there should be some reasonable adjustment to that, given that that would almost never be used. And the second one was with regard to wastewater treatment, which, given the gallons per person per day and so forth, at any rate, the Nagshead Commissioners, I believe they were unanimous in not pursuing any investigation of any of those changes or accommodation of wastewater. So, I anticipate the next task force meeting will be a revisit to those two critical functions, parking and wastewater, the Town of Nagshead, and how and where the task force will proceed on that project. So, I will keep you posted, but I don't anticipate a lot of movement forward.
Well.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to touch a little bit more on the COVID-19. I think we've pretty much covered it in all of the candidates. I just want to touch on one thing that has been brought to my attention on several different occasions over the past few days, and people were asking, do we know how many people were tested? Do we know who would have it if they tested positive? The answer to that is no. Due to HIPAA, which is the Health Insurance Porterability and Accountability Act that was passed by Congress in 1996, that information is prohibited by law. No, you will not have that information. Excerpt from that just clearly states it. "The minimum necessary standard, a key protection of the HIPAA privacy rule, is derived from confidentiality codes and practices in common use today. It is based on sound current practice that protected health information should not be used or disclosed when it is not necessary to satisfy a particular purpose or carry out a function. The minimum necessary standard requires covered entities to evaluate their practices and enhance safeguards as needed to limit unnecessary or inappropriate access to and disclose a protected health information. The privacy rule requires the minimum necessary are designed to be sufficiently flexible to accommodate the various circumstances of any covered entity." So, you will not know who has tested positive and how many tests have been conducted. Also, we were notified this afternoon, and I urge all mariners that are out on the waters, please keep an eye on your depth finders. The Army Corps of Engineers has informed us that they have stopped travel for dredge crews outside of Wilmington. Currently, the merit is in Wilmington for repairs and the Currituck is on its way to Wilmington from Ocean City. As of now, dredging operations will only be conducted in Wilmington Port and there's no word on when this travel ban will be lifted. With that, we do not have a pet of the week due to everything else going on, but I do have a Today in History. In 1796, the first military school in the United States was founded by Congress for the purpose of educating, training young men in the theory and practice of military science. This is located at West Point, New York. The U.S. Military Academy is often known as West Point. Located on the highest west bank of New York's Hudson River, West Point was the site of a revolutionary area fort built to protect the Hudson River Valley from British attack in 1780. Patriot General Benedict Arnold, the commander of the fort, agreed to surrender West Point to the British in exchange for 600 pounds, approximately $225,000 in today's U.S. However, the plot was uncovered before it fell into the British hands and Arnold fled to the British for protection. That gives you a little bit of history of not only the West Point, but also on Benedict Arnold himself. And with that, I wish everybody a safe next couple of weeks. Please adhere to all the precautions that the county is putting out and also the state health department is putting out. And I also want to take the opportunity to applaud all of those involved behind the scenes in keeping everybody informed and educated, and thank you for your hard work and dedication.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chairman Overman.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. On March 3rd, Commissioners House, Commissioner Bateman, and I attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the Arts Council. Dorothy was also there. Thank you, Dorothy, and provided some beautiful gold shovels that we used for the groundbreaking. Very nice ceremony. Several people showed up for that and it turned out very, very good, and that's going to be a very nice looking facility when they complete the construction of that. On March 10th, there was a workforce housing discussion that was held by Holtz Builders, who have done a lot of workforce-type construction throughout the country. The closest one they have to here is in East Tennessee, but those folks talked very positively about the projects that they've done, and we will continue to have some discussion with them through our friends at UNC School of Government, who we're working very closely with now. Commissioner House, Commissioner Bateman, and the county manager and I attended that. I'd like to say congratulations to our employee of the month, Bethany Lusk, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. Two weeks ago, we lost a very valuable member of the community, a guy named Shane Miles. I don't know if you guys knew Shane or not, but he was a runner, fellow runner. He was an employee at a bank sporting events. He had running company. I would just tell you, this guy was bad to the bone. He ran a marathon in October, end of October, stage four, liver, lung, and colon cancer.
Wow.
Ran a 50-miler about six weeks ago, and he passed away two weeks ago, and we had a memorial service for him this past Sunday. Just a great guy and a fighter right to the end. You've got to admire someone like that. And he was a big giver in the community. He was the advocate for runners and would never, somebody asked for any kind of help, he would always be there and the first one to step up to the plate. So, we lost a very valuable member of the community. The other thing, and I'm surprised you didn't mention this, but we had a town hall last week. Chairman Overman and myself were there, and it was probably the most, it was on substance abuse. We had, was it Mr. Nagel?
His.
Nagel?
Give me a minute.
Okay.
No, give me a minute.
Okay. Anyway, his first name was Paul.
Paul Nagy.
Nagy, okay. Who was a professor at Duke University, and he's also a clinical psychologist for a treatment center called Trosa, which is a two-year program in Durham, North Carolina, which has a recidivism rate after two years of 6% treating folks with substance abuse and alcoholism, which is phenomenal for someone only 6% of a 500 student population to relapse after two years. It's phenomenal. He spoke, and he spoke about medication-assisted treatment. And I would just tell you that I, as a person in recovery, I've always been skeptical of medical assisted treatment, but it opened my eyes up, I'm actually opened my eyes up to not only recovery, but also the different ways that you can approach it. And I've always been one of abstinence and abstinence only, and my way was the only way. Folks, I think I was wrong. I'm much more open-minded now, and I encourage you, Chairman Overman was talking to me afterwards and said, we need to have this gentleman back down here, and I would encourage you guys, when he does come back, to go there and listen to him and maybe he can do a presentation to us, because it was very, it's going to become a very important part of our treatment in the future, I believe, if it's handled the right way. And it can be handled the wrong way, but this guy really, it's such a great presentation, the way he put it forward. It made you understand and appreciate the recovery community. So, that's kind of all I got.
Let me add one thing to that. The presentation that Professor Nagy did here, the reason it was so good, he had talked about two minutes, and I wrote a note to Roxanna, who was sitting right next to him, and I said, he's going to be really good. And his way of presenting the information on medication-assisted treatment, which as Urban pointed out, has detractors as well as people who support it, but the way he presented the information was so non-confrontational. And the fact that he presented both sides of what he had to say really kind of endeared you to sit there and listen to what he had to say and accept what he had to say, because he could back up what he said with the data that they've had, particularly from Trosa. But it was a very good presentation, and if he converted you, he converted a lot of the, that was a good thing. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Bateman. Commissioner Couch?
Don't have anything of consequence. I did want to acknowledge the, to kind of bolster what Dorothy was saying, our public information officer, about the cooperative spirit that I'm seeing here as we continue to deal with this. It's the first time something like this has come down the pike, but you know, if the attitude of our county employees and all the players here from our professional and business community and individual citizens who are taking this seriously, we're going to be. to be able to move on. And, but I am just deeply grateful from the school nurses who were in there. They showed up en masse. Everybody was respectful. They were, had a determined spirit. It was just a great thing to see, very encouraging. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. Brings us to county manager. Do you have anything else?
I don't have anything else to add, Mr. Chairman.
Dorothy, you have anything else?
Only whether you want to show the short COA video that we were going to, you may want to.
Do you have that available?
Matt had it available.
Yeah.
And it was a short public service announcement that you talked about, so we'll give.
I'm Bob Woodard, Chairman, Dare County Board of Commissioners. Our Board of Commissioners realize the importance of having a community college to serve our region.
We don't have any.
Now, more than ever, we need to train the next generation of skilled workers to fulfill the upcoming workforce demands. In order to address this challenge, Dare County is taking action to show our commitment to our citizens by passing the Dare Guarantee Scholarship. This scholarship provides our high school graduates, who are residents of Dare County and the United States, the opportunity for free education, because we need to invest in the future of our youth.
I'm so excited to be one of the first Dare Guaranteed students. I had no idea what my next step in life would be after high school, and this opportunity enabled me to take the next steps towards my career without the financial burden for both my parents and I.
The College of the Albemarle Foundation makes it easy for you to apply. Just one application is all it took for me to get started. I am beyond thankful in the county's investment in my education and look forward to the day when I can pay it forward by pouring knowledge learned at COA back into the community that invested in me.
The Dare Guarantee Scholarship Program is really a win-win opportunity for everyone involved. Dare County is providing access to higher education for our students at essentially no cost to the student or their family. This collaborative effort with COA demonstrates the visionary approach of our county's leadership, and it's very exciting to be a part of it. As Assistant Superintendent for Dare County Schools and a COA Board of Trustee member, but also a COA alum and proud parent of two COA grads, great things are happening educationally in Dare, and this is an outstanding opportunity for our high school grads to take advantage of.
We are Dare Guaranteed.
I'm Amy Alcosaire with College of the Albemarle's Foundation Office. I am so excited to be able to partner with Dare County so together we can make an impact on our community through education.
And I'm John Hunting, College of the Albemarle Liaison, and I'm looking forward to working with the students of Dare County Public Schools. For more information, visit www.albemarle.edu/scholarships.
Thank you, Dare County, for believing in us.
Very nice.
Yep, very nice.
Thank you for showing that, Dorothy. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. That's all I have. Thank you.
Dave, you have anything else for us to say?
Just one quick one. We were supposed to have the pre-construction conference for the Health and Human Services building tomorrow. We've delayed that by a month, because what they're going to try to do is do it virtually. The AR Chesson has the BIM system, which is 3D drawing, so we'll, rather than walk people through the buildings to look, especially at the HVAC system, they're going to do it virtually, and then we'll set a new bid date.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Well, that brings us to the end of our meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn until April 6?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner House to adjourn until April 6. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman and Vice Chairman Ovman. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.